Even if the resident is quote-unquote satisfied, there could be ways that the design of the station, et cetera, could be limiting. The service could be even better if it's already excellent. I mean, I don't know what the difference is between how much more efficient they could be moving around the station, for example, if we did something different there. So are we just very good right now? You know, so I guess I would, I feel like we need to define that. Not just what's the perception of the service, but what is the actual service? So what are we saying service is here? You know, and I guess to the chief's point, he said at the end of the day, they put out the fire, they perform the rescue, or you know, he can explain that again if he wants to, but, or if you ask him to. Like I said, I feel like it's advancing an argument that we're not doing this because there's any limitations in the service we're providing. And I don't know that we are or not doing it for that reason. I would like to be able to point to information that supports that statement, I guess. So I don't want to just like have a sense for something. I'd rather be able to, you know, I can point to things that say there are issues with the health safety and welfare of our firefighters. That's what we have in our packet. I can't point to anything that says the service delivered out of our station is excellent. I don't want to point to.
I don't know.
And to me, that statement is actually showing our confirmation and commitment that we, we know that the work that they do is great work. And the discussion of fire station is not about questioning their level of work. We want to show our commitment to the level of work they do and to our firefighters. And to me, that's where we say the, the service is excellent because it means that we believe in the service they provide. And this whole agenda item and conversation about fire station is not to question the level of work they do. That's what I read out of it.
If you remove that though, I think if you remove the service delivered out, the only like noun, you know, significant noun phrase here, the current city dexter fire station is functionally obsolete. The current station needs significant renovation. There's nothing to me, if you leave that out, that I don't think somebody could read that as an implication that we're saying anything about the service or that we're saying anything about whether or not we value the firefighters. It's clear we're talking about the fire station. Both of the sentences that would remain would begin with the current city dexter fire station or the current station. Okay, so let's all say it.
Michelle?
If you don't mind, I'll offer a suggestion. Right, what you're looking for in what you mentioned, that sentence, the service delivered out. If that, or some modification of that was actually the first sentence, and then you identify, however, the current station is functionally obsolete, et cetera. You would end it there and then go into the next sentence, this second one about the current station needing renovation or the new station rather than frame that. Because it's not just the health safety and welfare of firefighters and residents. It's also the level of service, to your point, that could be improved by needing that station. So just kind of reworking the end of words. If that helps.
Okay.
So that's all I was gonna say. But Michelle needs to think of something. I mean, so if we wanted to make some like statement of value, we could lead with, we, you know, we value the health safety and welfare of our firefighters and our residents. We value, take some phrase from our charter and have to look it up, but, you know, we value our commitment to doing X as indicated in our charter, whatever, like whole language. You know, you know, for these reasons, you know, this is obsolete, therefore blah, 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 blah. So I mean, if we want to make a statement like value judgment or something, yeah, I would rather it be in the beginning. And I would rather it actually say what we mean. So if what we mean is we value our firefighters, I'd rather say we value our firefighters. If what we mean is we have no immediate concerns about the service delivery coming out of the station, I'd rather say we have no immediate concerns about the delivery, you know, like, instead of saying, well, what we mean by that, clearly it's not, so it's not clear to me. So if there's a clear way to say what you want the service delivered out of the station is exactly what I mean, and I'm happy to consider that, but I think it should be more direct and specific. And I agree, something like that could come at the beginning as like, here's the context. Here's the things we value. Here's this thing in front of us, this is functionally obsolete, and it needs X or Y. I don't know if that prompts any ideas or notes.
Okay, so we need to work on some of the wording that's done for this. I wish to not get bogged down on this, though, today. You know, doing some other stuff we can.
Taking a look at that yet.
You want to take a look at similar?
Well, for the ether, for the cracking. I believe excellent is a very, very important word. And my background in architecture school is if you do, you do a competent job of, all the models are done well, all the drawings are done well, your design as well, you get a C. In order to get an A, an excellent grade, you need to make Frank Lloyd Wright look like a monkey with a typewriter. And so the excellent service for me would be ISO of one. We're at five, partially because of limitations for the station. So we're very good, we're less than Chelsea, Chelsea's at a four, I believe. It's about, we talk about expectations. The fire department is punching above its weight. They're providing a better service than ought to be expected out of a building. Is kind of the thing that I read from that. So for the ether.
Chief, do we have any chance to get to an ISO of one?
No. Simple answer.
Yeah, I don't think so either. Now, that's the whole thing.
We're at ISO five right now, which is really very, very, very good for this type of department. The numbers go the other way, Chelsea's a six, so they're not as good as us, the numbers give that. So could we get to a four? Yeah, we could. Two things that would happen is, one, a ladder truck, two, adding additional firefighters, mainly paid-on-call staff that actually show up on fires, so we get that average turnout. Training time could be better, we had training facilities that were built into the stations. A number of facilities that we don't have available to us right now, we need to build in, such as smoke houses, trill areas, areas that we could go out and drive fire trucks and things of that nature. Be able to pull handling. So anyway, we get minute little pieces of all of that stuff. I, I think this department's very close to getting to a four. I don't see that you'll get to a one, two, or three without full-time staffing in every single station. The other limitation that we have is water supply. While the city does have hybrids, water supply out in the townships is much more difficult to achieve if you have the rated, and the rated supply points and as many of them as we need out in those areas. Those, that one's pretty hard to crack.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Appreciate it.
To me, the phrase said delivered out of the station. It, it puts it in a context and you're talking about that station and what comes with it. So maybe that's, if I may ask a question from chief, how would you rate the service your team is providing out of that station, basically based on what it is and what are the limitations of it?
Sure, as I try to impress that our last meeting, that the service you're getting out of that station is outstanding. It's excellent, the guys have done the job. To what Jamie said earlier, is that, you know, firefighters, the fires go out, I think it was Jamie that said, fires go out, the rescues get made, firefighters go back and, and, you know, put everything back in service and nobody gets hurt and we're all big heroes to everybody. The reality of it is that your firefighters that are here, like any other firefighters across the nation, they get the call, they make it happen, irregardless of how safe it is, irregardless of what they have to do to make it happen. For instance, you get that structure fire, guys come in, we have issues pulling into the station or parking in the station. We have issues with trying to get out of the station to get the trucks on the road. We go out, we fight the fire, we're in the contaminants, our gear gets dirty, our equipment gets dirty, our trucks get dirty. We come back to the station and we end up getting it back together. But how did we do that? Well, trucks are parked on the road while we're cleaning one truck and rotating through. We're cleaning gear and equipment in areas that are not conducive to that type of activity. When we clean our air packs, clean our hoses, but you have the firefighters doing it. You know, they may circumvent safety or recommended protocols to get things done, but the firefighters get it done and you don't see it.
So I, I see that point, I agree, that they do a lot more, that they could, they could do the different things, but my point is that in that statement, we are saying out of that station, meaning the limitations of all of the things that chief just mentioned. And even with all of that, the level of service is excellent. It's about us saying and acknowledging that with all of the things at that station and everything around it in this conversation, they still, we acknowledge, they still provide an excellent level of service. That's what I see out of this. And we are in this also acknowledging that, what chief mentioned, that the station is functionally obsolete, but that doesn't mean that the service with this level out of it is nothing.
Yeah, when I first looked at this, I thought it was a help to us to build a case if we want to get a knowledge. Meaning, I'm not reacting from the fact that everything's just falling apart and nothing's good and we're desperate to do. I'm acknowledging that while this is on the surface, you know, this looks great. There are other things and that follows in the other half of the sentence. That's how it struck me, I don't know if it's anybody else, but, kind of like, I want the community to know that I'm not reacting a panic. It's not, I'm taking time to study it, to taking the time to look at it, to do the best they can do, so. I don't know if that helps. It's a really hard thing to explain and a hard thing to talk about, there's no doubt about it.
So there are a great many things that go on in the station that are not tied to emergency response. They're not tied to the service that you've provided. Some of that stuff, sleeping quarters is a big one. We have guys who, every day going up and down a set of stairs that's really not conforming to the standards. In fact, your miles report identifies that as an issue, the landings aren't big enough. I fear every day that somebody might trip and fall down those stairs. And then we get a multimillion dollar lawsuit against us because we allowed people to go up and down and then use it. During COVID, I fear, we're trying to write policy of procedures in order to limit the spread of COVID, keep our people safe, and yet I'm putting people in a bunk room on a second floor where they're sleeping no more than four foot from each other. They can't, they can't wear masks all night, they can't separate, and they're in a second floor where there's no ventilation at all. The second floor's temperature control is done by portable heaters and window air conditioners. So, you know, there's inherent things in the building that create tremendous risk of DAFD and the city as well that we're trying to address that are not responsive. So those are, those are some of the issues we cannot, and those are really the bigger issues. As I said, we go out, we get out the door, we're gonna do the job. We're gonna get out the door, we're gonna do the job, we're gonna come back. It's, actually, we're kind of safer out the door than we are in the door.
Well, keep, keep going, chief, if you don't mind. As, if those are the bigger issues, tell us what are the, the next seven issues.
I think the, my ocean report identified a couple of things that bringing in an industrial hygienist would be good to take a look at. I have large concerns with the, the fact that we have a restroom area, kitchen, our, our workroom, all in one spot. We don't have offices for people to work. You know, it's just not a very clean environment. In fact, the last two weeks, we've been at the mice park again. And, you know, not having a, having the front door the way it is with vegetables, there's no buffer between the outside, so you're always getting, you know, bugs and, and sometimes the guys prop the door open, we end up with chipmunks in the, in the building. Those are health issues, you know, that, that we just can't overcome for a building. We just had an issue in the basement with, and thank you for the city for getting on it real quick, but we had a backup in the sewer rights, which ultimately backed up into where hard to storing a lot of their rehab stuff that they use throughout the county. And it certainly damaged a lot of that that ended up getting thrown away because of the wastewater that backed up into that, into that wound. And the drains actually up above, so it dripped down on, on everything in there. Those types of actions become more and more frequent, I mean, the building's getting older. Where else am I gonna go?
Did you react to that?
You did.
That air came out. Hurt.
He did. So I think that's maybe where some of the water was coming from that was damaging the city records when, when they were down there as well. Gosh, I could go on. If you look at the apparatus and what we have out in the apparatus bay, you know, we've got a, the center washer and dryers out there that's really designed for residential type linens, sheets, uniforms, things of that nature. Under recommended standards now, those types of long reaction activities don't occur out on an apparatus bay floor. They should be in with the residential side or the business side of the building. We're storing hazardous materials out there, we're storing our gear out there, which really needs to be in a darker, air-controllable room so that they can off-gas it between washings. The apparatus, right now, the bay doors, they're very, they're only 12-foot line doors. Recommended standard is 14-foot now. Our guys, I, I get a lot of vehicle damage from guys nicking or hitting the, either the doors or backing up too far and backing into something because the bay area is small. A new code issue with the bay area is the fact that the drains do go straight to the sewer drains. There's no oil-water separator, which, you know, my ocean now are with environmental protection. That should all be straight out for all the oils and crossovers that would end up in there. We get a lot of nicks on doors on fire trucks. There's not enough space to open the doors with two trucks without them hitting. It just happens, all right, not much we can do about it. A recommended space between trucks is, is six foot now, so that you have time, you have space for all the cords, the air cords, electrical cords, keeping the doors open so the trucks can cook, dry out, air out, those types of things. We don't have the space to do that. We're also, our only SCBA refill station for filling our air bottles is at the city station, and it sits behind one of the trucks. Just found realized that that thing actually vents to the inside, so we're filling bottles, it's pulling air from inside the apparatus bay, and it's going through a whole bunch of filters. I don't believe that we have an air issue right now, but certainly there could be, there's a little bit of a risk there, but that should be in a room by itself or separated so that we aren't getting apparatus contaminants in it. So that's just another deficiency with the type of building we have. And this list can go on and on and on, I don't know, take all my talking about all of these undocumented, many of them are already different things. I think I covered the major conceptual areas, if you will.
Thank you. So part of tonight was to try and figure out an order of delving into some of those issues, I think. So I wanted to spread it all out. Some of those, did you want to go into further? I don't want to take away from what you had an order here of trying to identify topics, right?
Right, yeah, so, I mean, if the goal is to have work sessions either before our meeting or at least once a month, or, you know, whatever frequency the city council would like, it'd be nice to have kind of an order of operations, so that way staff can prepare material, we can all move forward, knowing what's, what's coming up. And so I, I listed a few potential topic areas. I don't know how council feels about those, or if there are others that you'd like to, like to dive into.
If I hadn't heard the, last one that you just talked about, the filling unit?
I've said it before.
Yeah. Is that device something that, in practice, I mean, could that be a different station? Are other stations set up for that?
We are, we're actually talking about that right now, but that's about $60,000 unit that trying to move could really create problems with it. But we're gonna move, we would have to contract it and figure it out with another station. So there are, there are some things that could be done right now. But in the long run, having all of our, all of the ability to rehab or renovate our equipment all in one station is really important to us, so that we don't have to drive from one station to another, to another, just to put a piece of equipment in, everyone's all in one spot. None of our two outlying stations right now really have enough space to do all of it in one spot. And so we've got, we're trying to set up station two to the best of our ability to do that. Right now, we're keeping our holes out there, so that we go out there, we drop off our holes, we clean it, we keep some extra oxygen bottles out there in case we need to do that. But then again, when we do stuff and we put it at one station, the, you know, calls all the way across the town or across to the other station, it's a little bit difficult. And so my, my assistant chiefs are often after the fire event, say, geez, which truck do I want to go to which station first so that we can put stuff back together in a responsible order? And then we end up splitting staff all over the place because some of them have to come to station one to fill bottles, clean air packs, do things like that. Some of them go to station two to clean homes. And then ultimately, when they, we get it all done, they get the truck back to whatever station it's gonna go to, and then they gotta wash the truck, deep-dampulate the truck and clean it. So the goal would be to have our headquarters station, our main station, be the place where we do all that research because it's gonna have the most resources, it should have the most resources. So we're making some temporary things, it's not ideal. And it will create additional logistics for us down the road, but that is horrible. And I think I haven't priced it out with getting that unit moved, if it survives the move. I think it would be about $8,000 to $10,000 just to get it moved. And if it doesn't survive, it will look at about $60,000 for a new unit, so I haven't pulled that trigger yet.
See, none of the dozen or so stations I've visited have had it in their apparatus bay. They all have a dedicated room, it's generally off of the exterior wall so they can pull a fresh air from there. The main station in Oxford Township, it's connected, it's on the side of the bay, but it's, doesn't have they actually will wait 15 minutes after trucks leave before they flip the switch because they're concerned about it. Again, we're the only one, we're the only one of the dozen plus stations I've seen that has it stuck behind the diesel exhaust.
Right, and that, that room also serves as a clean room for taking care of our air packs and our masks and everything. There's, there's calibrations that need to be done on that. So it is as, as we talk through what needs to be there as part of the apparatus bay is, that's a room that's, that's pretty important to us.
Thank you for, I didn't pick up on that before.
In terms of next steps, big picture, I've been thinking about this a lot, I'm sure you guys have been also. I'm inclined to try to, if we're putting something on the ballot, I'm inclined to have our schedule such that August is a possibility, so I haven't re-looked at those dates. But I just want to make sure that any schedule, my preference would be any schedule we're mapping out would allow something to go in August, in the event we need to modify it for November. So it's one idea to throw out there. In terms of what I believe need to get to a good point with the decision, I am less inclined to deep dive into any of these documents, although they have been helpful to me as I work to get to where I am on this topic. I could imagine a series of three more work sessions where the chief has offered multiple times to give sort of an overview about the provision of services coming out of DAFD. I can imagine a work session on that. Then what I would be happy to see next is a work session on the plans for the renovation with the chief or somebody else with fire station design expertise, leading, helping council understand the trade-offs in that design. And then a third one on the design that, for the new build proposed at Meadowview. And again, the chief or somebody else with design experience, leading that to help council understand the trade-offs there. So I'm at a point where it's clear to me, as I think it is to everybody, we need to do something. I would be happy to have an, an overall presentation on the overall operations of the DAFD as, as it pertains to designs of fire stations generally. And then I would, I would rather get into the, the current designs that are on the table and with the opportunity to understand the trade-offs. And if, as the way I've mapped it out, you know, that would just be three more sessions we'd be done by mid-April. I don't know if we, if I feel inclined to have another separate Saturday public input session, or if we just make it clear that the public's invited to all these work sessions at 6 o'clock or wherever timing needs to be. So I'm interested to know what people think, you know, accommodating, potentially accommodating in August's schedule, and if others feel like they, they would need to talk about additional topics besides an overview presentation and then looking at the two designs.
We haven't had a public meeting the whole city since the 14th, since, it's 14th, I remember, 14th.
We had 12 in 2019.
But we showed them stuff from 2014.
So you'd like to see a public meeting?
Well, I think we have to do a lot, I'm just wondering. More meetings, companies can't come, you know, if they want to do it. And we said, an opportunity there, a little bit more public engagement.
Would, would you, can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
Would you rather that be after we deal with, we've come to some idea? Or would you rather it be earlier on, when we're still not sure?
I prefer it to be after we've done it.
Sounds sweet.
Since no one else is talking, I, I generally prefer the big elections or big questions. But I do acknowledge that it's common practice when you're asking for money to, to do it before the big one, to allow you to adjust if necessary. So I, I'd generally prefer November, but I'm objective to go before, to allow us to build within, do whatever we're gonna do within the years that happened, wait two years. I think, well, and I, I don't want to speak of the past in the past prologue, but I keep comparing this process with what we did for the sewer treatment plant, where we sent our staff out and said, go find what you need to do and come back to us, and and come back to us and explain why you need it and we'll try to make it happen as close as we can. Chief Smith has built more fire stations than any of us have with him, personally involved in the process. And for whatever reason, because we can't wrap our, our minds around spending that much money for building or because we're averse to change and we can't imagine a fire station anywhere else, or whatever reason, my observations are we're, we're not listening to that. We're, we don't want to listen to it. Either we're going to listen to experts who have more experience with us, or we're going to have to educate ourselves so we can hear the concern from the public voices. Uh, so I am planning on going to the station design conference again this year, May twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth. If folks are concerned that they aren't able to articulate why we need to have a separate room for the self-contained breathing apparatus two different laundry washing areas, um, I recommend you go or we get someone from there to, to speak to us. Uh, I recall we previously approved, we had a presentation from someone remotely and we previously approved money for another one. That's what I thought. So now?
Um, so I agree generally with big, um, elections in November election to, to get people. Instead of an election in August, can we do public hearings to get that input that might inform our decision to put it on the ballot in November? Um, I don't know the answer. I'm just asking, um, do we think that might be a good idea? I would like a session on definition, maybe it can be a combined session, shorter one, on definition of main station and fire and emergency service needs for the city of Dexter. I think for both of those things, there are areas that could be confusing for our residents. Um, you know, our interlocal agreement that talks about main station, but doesn't really say what the main station needs to have or what does it need? And residents might not also know the fire and emergency service needs for the city of Dexter in a very tangible way. So I would like to see maybe some conversation around that. Um, if some of it might be that for us that have had this wonderful binder, um, that has walked us through everything that has been done so far, might be easier to decipher than for our residents. And it should be a good conversation, I think, for them to also know what do we mean by main station or service need.
So is that, is that two, definition of main station and, and our service needs? What do you say?
Yes, so the, the two bullet points, definition of main station and the one after fire and emergency service needs for the city of Dexter. Even combined with
It would seem like fire and emergency service needs, we would also need to understand it for DAFD if we're supposed to be the main station for DAFD. So did you mean specifically only city of Dexter? Or as part of a conversation about the needs for DAFD to also emphasize what's needed just in, in the city? I would be partial to know hearing about all of DAFD if we're supposed to be the main station for DAFD. So I could see that happening in, in the same session.
Yep. I think it would be beneficial to have that pool, but also break down what is it for the city of Dexter.
Okay, so where does, in terms of the three that where does, where does that rank? Are those first, second, last?
I think that would be first. I think, yeah, I think that would be first. And that would fit with what I essentially was asking for, that would be fine to me.
Is that the same as your overall operating thing?
Right, right. Yeah, that's sort of what I'm asking for.
Bullet four?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Spent it up on. So who are we going to present that?
If you make sense to me, that's the one that's running the state, the DAFD.
Hey, dude.
Chief, that's the one?
All right.
Yeah, I don't have any problem doing that. In fact, I, I roll up, but I, some of you have seen the previous ISO discussion that I've done for members in the past. And then I roll that into, uh, first and only the other department that, that talked about the ISO, because I think it steps us right through, you know, why we do what we do. Follow that with some of our budgeting stuff and, uh, that give you a good idea of why, why these concepts from there, how many to move. And then I think it's a good idea to follow up in a different meeting with the, the design that you already worked, as I said last month, I, I can take you right through a fire, designing a fire station, let you guys design it right here. Go room by room based on what we need. And I think that would help you tremendously to, to do that piece. Probably a three hours.
Um, so, you know, if, if some of these are going to be that level of detail, where we can have the detail. Or is that, I'd love to have the detail. I think trying to talk is a rush.
Excuse me, say it again.
I think trying to get to August is a rush. I you know, a few meetings ago, we laid out however many number of meetings, almost fourteen, I think Zach said, that we had before we had to get to right for November. Churning that by ninety days doesn't give us as much time. We're, we're going to be, we're going to be in a busy season. April, May and June with budget workshops. Also. So, anyway, I I'm, I'm not in favor of moving that up that fast. Definitely, I didn't, we need the time.
I'm available. I will, you know, if we are able to spec something out to see what would that look like to make it happen in August, I would be happy to look at a calendar that says we have these sorts of things also need to fit in place and here's what our scheduled work sessions might look like if we tried to do August and here's what it would look like if we're shooting for November. I'd be happy to at least consider that. I am not I don't want, I don't want to be the one holding us back because I can't pick a Saturday work session. I understand people have lives, but I'm committed to doing this. And I'm not suggesting you're not, but I would like to see
That's what it sounds.
Yeah. Well, I don't need to make it sound that way. I need to say I am willing to do what needs to be done. And if that is having little of work sessions, I could look at how we made that last year. I will do it.
I'm not suggesting not having work sessions. I'm just
Right.
I mean, sometimes you need time to actually think.
Right.
I'm not just doing them to check them off.
I'd rather see a schedule, I guess, so I can see, understand what you're saying. It could be crushed. I'd like to see what that looks like in a calendar. Because maybe you're able to keep in your head everything else that you know is coming. Maybe I don't have that all in my head. I'd be happy to look at that.
Um, how fast could you be ready to talk about your thoughts on definition main station and fire and emergency service needs for the city of Dexter?
I hours. Hours after those presentations, I would just, uh,
We already have slideshows from that whole.
I, I do already have the ISO slideshows, the budget I just had to bring up to talk about in the budget document and I would apply that to everybody who goes through.
Again, you need more than an hour, probably.
More than an hour to put the program together?
Yeah, to deliver the program.
You're probably talking three or four hours. It's a lot of material.
It's, it's one of the reasons why I've said in architecture school, one of the favorite projects they went is designing fire stations. Because programmatically, where you, and how you separate things and how you flow through the building is really complex. In addition to the iconography of, of that particular type of structure.
So here, here's the deal. I could, I could do it in an hour, but the history of this board has always been, well, what, what else?
No, what I'm trying to think about is, you know, what day to do that. The commitment we were making was to try and do a bunch of these hour workshops before the meetings. This is a change in that. So I'm just trying to think about when we would have to do that.
Yeah, I would recommend trying to chop it up, but
Okay. Okay, well then, I guess we got a work to find. It's probably a Saturday or, or an evening. I mean, all right, I'm going to think about that. I'll try to get some laid out for March.
I generally feel like anything we're going to do.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, what's go, what's go next then?
I think one of the two designs.
Okay.
For me personally, it would be one of the two, one of the two designs.
Okay. So if we're going to have a long, a long workshop like that, do you want to try and encourage the public to attend those?
I don't think they'll come if it's a three-hour presentation. I really don't. I don't think they'll, I don't think they'll give you a Saturday of three hours. I'd be surprised.
I also would come with a hard presentation after the last one we had.
I didn't hear what you said.
After the last one we had, I don't think they'll come to an hour presentation.
So we just scrap it and don't do it?
No, no, no.
I think it's time to advertise it to them like we would advertise any other public meeting, I guess. If, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know if this came up, but something I would get in the weekly email updates, maybe it's, I don't know, I forget what this discussion came from, it was on Saturday. But including in the email updates, if there's just another to remind the city council of this planning question, whatever, you could just fall on that jump where there's a work session on Saturday, there's the agenda package. I don't know what that asks, to ask what, or how that would be decided, but it could just be notification and that same thing, having to justify anything else.
Done?
If we do that, then I think that anybody that's coming in for a three-hour session, work session with us is going to expect to be able to participate. And so
Expect to.
Expect to participate. And not that I don't want their participation, but you know what that does, lengthening. Whatever it is we're doing, I, I'm not sure that I think that's the best way to do it. Maybe we get it together and, and then have a public informational and it isn't three hours. I don't know. That's my initial thoughts, like, well, I don't know how smooth or how streamlined that would be. And maybe I'm the only one that's, has that concern. I don't know, but.
We could have the session and then, um, have a public meeting an hour before the next council meeting. And if somebody, that could also help those who are not able to attend the three-hour session to watch the video if they want to sort of advertise it that here is our session and here is a public hearing, a couple of minutes before we finish.
I they're, they're all public meetings, you know, and they're all, I would just, we want to try and have some effort to see.
To encourage.
To encourage people to come and talk. Okay, other ideas for topics? All right, so we're going to need to align our data then. That's part of the thought process for the presentations on. That. All right, we'll try to get some data. Done for now? Else want to talk about tonight then?
Oh, this is related, but not really. Uh, pie in the sky idea. Parks and Rec has been, we had that, not, not an all committee, but we had a, a meeting at the library board and people from other, I guess, local groups, arts, culture and heritage was there to talk about the military park north, uh, potential, whatever's happening there. And of course, everybody's wondering what's happening with the station, you know, is that, is that part of what we're doing or not? And, you know, the current plan is no, it's everything, you know, not part of that, that's not the park. So we're not talking about any of the changes to that. I imagine this has come up on council in the past. The idea that I've been throwing around is all else being equal, something I've thought about and asked myself, all else being equal. Is that where I would leave a fire station? Or not? What is the opportunity cost of leaving the fire station there in terms of other design, uh, opportunities or development opportunities, I guess is about a way to look at it. So I can picture, again, all else being equal, this is being not, not focusing on the details of the fire station decision, but saying, suppose I wasn't even on the table, what would I picture there? I could picture a building that somehow is able to extend, become the place for the new indoor farmer's market. You've got the outdoor right there. You have some development on top that is the new indoor farmer's market. If you're familiar with Nichols or Page in Ann Arbor, it's like that outdoor indoor like shop thing. Tunnel, the walkway thing. You could do something like that. You could have additional parking down below. You could, um, have some sort of a public meeting space, maybe not a full community center, I'm not sure what, you know, this is just totally pie in the sky, like I said. But could there be a room that people could rent? If you're throwing a birthday party, a retirement party, you reserve this room. You go down and play the park, come back and have your cake and food, whatever, that sort of a thing. So I think it comes along the lines of what's happening with thirty forty-five or thirty forty-five broad, where the city is potentially or has in the past wanted to work with the developer to sort of oversee and work together to, you know, work together for some vision, what could happen there. I could see something like that, the tension happening at eighty-one forty, given a decision was made that there's no fire station there. So I know that's conditional on a lot. Um, but it's something I've thought about in terms of, if, if this discussion was not on the table and this was just a development opportunity, what would I choose to put there? And the first thing that comes to my mind is not a fire station. I think there's a lot of other really cool things that could be there. But again, maybe some of you just think that's completely irrelevant because of other facts that you're aware of. I just wanted to throw that out there and let you know something I thought about.
Well, one, I'll just react to some of it. One of the first questions that I think asks anybody, probably a fire station, either that you're here a long time or have been a long time, is would you build a fire station where it's at? And they laugh. Pretty nuts. They know that it's busiest space in the whole city, is that? I don't know what this run of us is, we would help that. And of course, being recognized, maybe that's not a good spot for a fire. Yeah, I don't talk to them, I just ask them. And the question maybe is, I don't know. And, uh, yeah, they're, they're pretty doesn't they, you know, they have a, you know, to be a fire station. I think my base is, I, I see. What I, what I fear, and I still fear that if we did put the fire station there, or whether we decide to do one way or the other, that we fill up that space. Which we do the same thing if we're in a fire station there, and that is fill up the space. You know, under the president's design, I mean, I mean, we go from basically Alpine, the road that goes down to the park. And you could never see anything in that park if it all dings on a pole. And as tall as well, if that one side that goes down, it'd have to be thirty feet tall. I don't think that's a good spot for view from the park. So for those, for those reasons, besides anything else, it's a huge space. I don't think it's a good spot for a fire. I think it's a good spot to fire. It works. I think it would work now. It's presently a distance.
Okay, if anybody needs to use the restroom or anything. Two more, start breaking.